...now with the public hearing for Potentia Holdings. I think you're all here for the first one, so this will be a bit of a repeat. My name is Mark Massey. I'm president and CEO of the Genesee County Economic Development Center. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out today for these three public hearings on the proposed benefits for these projects. The purpose of these public hearings is to solicit comments and feedback about the proposed incentives being requested by each project. These projects are potentially seeking a pilot property tax abatement, sales tax abatement, or a mortgage tax exemption. Again, these incentives are not cash given to the company. Instead, they are an abatement on future taxes that would be owed resulting from the development of the project. Copies of the applications for financial assistance and economic impact analysis for each project are available on the G C D C's website. The G C D C's uniform tax exemption policy is also available on the G C D's website. These public hearings are being broadcast live at the link provided in the public notice for the public hearings. Again, as we stated earlier, we'll extend the time period for written comments to Thursday at 5:00 P. M. They can be sent to gcedc@gcedc.com. Please make sure in the subject line to put data center projects, project rampart, project potentia, or project double read, so we know it's related to those. We do have a sign-in sheet. Please sign in if you haven't already done so. If you wish to speak, please place an X by your name. If you have already spoken, your comments are in the record. If there are different comments you would like to provide, you can come up and do that at this time. Please note that these public hearings are not a question-and-answer period. Any comments received, either written or oral, will be compiled and given to the board prior to the board meeting where a final vote on the proposed incentives will take place. We will start with a brief overview of the proposed project for Potentia Holdings. When that's been completed, we'll go to the sign-in sheet and read off on who asked. We just again, before providing any comments, we ask that each speaker clearly state their name and address, so we can make sure it is accurately reflected in the record. You will be given three minutes to provide comments. We please ask that everybody try to stick to the three minutes. We want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak here. Again, Matt, we'll be giving notice when there's 30 seconds left to go in your comment period. For project potentia, this is a proposed 892,000-square-foot data center, $2.156 billion investment, proposed incentives of a sales tax exemption of $125 million, and a property tax exemption, in this case, of almost $43 million. And this project is estimated to generate a total of $143 million in local municipal revenue over 20 years. We'll go now to the public comment period. Again, before making comments, we just ask that each speaker clearly state their name, spell their last name, state their municipality of residence clearly, so we can get it correctly in the record. And again, if you are new to come up and speak and you wish your comments to apply to all three projects, please just state that. We will make sure that all of your comments will apply to all three. And again, please also note that the three projects are mutually exclusive as they seek to acquire overlapping property. Accordingly, the G C D C board is only considering whether to approve one or none of the projects.
None. None. One.
Is that?
Zero. Your answer is zero.
Karen Jones?
My name is Karen Jones, and I'm a resident of the town of Shelby in Medina, New York. I live six miles just north of the Stamp site. As a resident of the Western New York community, I'm writing to express my opposition to and my concerns for the community regarding the financial incentives being offered to the three recently approved projects, project potentia, and the development of project potentia by G C E D C, project rampart, and the same, and project double read, and the same. I don't understand Mr. Massey's comment just now about how the vote will be for one or none. Have you already determined which one?
No, all three will not fit at the study. The board would not approve three data center projects. At most, they would approve one or none of them.
Thank you. Can you please not take that off of my time?
Yes.
Thank you. So I'm here to express my concerns about the financial and environmental impact of these projects, as well as the lack of transparency in this process. Across the United States, the most responsible and successful data center projects are those where companies fully fund their own infrastructure and commit to sustainable energy and water use from the outset. Microsoft's data centers in Quincy, Washington, operate entirely on hydroelectric power and do not shift infrastructure costs onto local ratepayers. Google's Hamina Finland facility uses seawater instead of fresh water for cooling, significantly reducing its environmental footprint. Mata's data centers in Ohio and Tennessee are powered by 100% renewable energy without relying on public subsidies. In contrast, the companies developed at Stamp are seeking financial incentives without clear commitments to funding their own infrastructure, protecting local resources, or ensuring their operations will not increase costs for Western New York residents. The required substation and other energy upgrade raise serious concerns about whether electricity ratepayers in Western New York will be left covering the costs. Abandoning company report has already warned that growing data center energy demand could lead to higher utility bills nationwide. If public funds or ratepayer dollars are used to subsidize these facilities, the full details must be disclosed in advance, according to law. Yet this information was withheld until this past Friday, the very day comments from the public were due, making it nearly impossible for the community to actually evaluate the deal. Additionally, the environmental impact of these facilities must be addressed. Hyperscale data centers are notorious for their massive electricity and water consumption. Without clear commitments from these companies regarding their energy sources, cooling methods, and water use, Western New York risks bearing the long-term environmental consequence without seeing meaningful local benefits. Can you explain why the company developed at Stamp by requiring public financial incentives and shifting electric infrastructure cost onto Western New York rather than self-funding their own substations and committing to a 100% renewable energy solutions from day one? The town of Alabama and the Board of Stamp have an ethical and legal duty to represent all the people who will be directly impacted by these projects. Therefore, it's imperative that the Board of the Genesee County Economic Development Agency and the town of Alabama lay the groundwork now to protect local citizens first. Most of all, they must ensure that they contribute its fair share to electricity and water while protecting local resources and respecting Native American rights. First of all, by extending the written comment period beyond this Thursday of this week. There must be another public hearing that is extended in a reasonable timeframe for working people to attend at the very earliest, beginning at 5:00 P. M. You must publicize the hearing. This hearing is not on the town of Alabama's website, even though you can click on Western New York Stamp, and it will take you to very nice PR, but nothing about this hearing. Furthermore, this public notice was only posted in the Matavia Daily News, which has paywall. Meanwhile, you could have published in the Penny Saver, the Video News Service, the Orleans Hub, and Investigative Post, all of which have the ability to post a public notice. You must ensure utility cost transparency and fair contribution. Require data centers to pay impact fees and tier-rate surcharges for high electricity and water usage, preventing the rest of us from subsidizing that cost. Insist upon direct agreements with utilities that are long-term contracts to prevent sudden price hikes for locals. And these are the biggest concerns when it comes to how will this impact us? It truly will be our electric bill and our water bill. It is going to skyrocket. You must require power purchase agreements that incentivize renewables and efficiency measures. Require facility owners to actually report quarterly their water and energy use. And implement strict water withdrawal permits with maximum allowable usage. Require zero liquid discharge or advanced water treatment. In terms of wetland and ecosystem, conduct thorough environmental impact assessments and include noise and air quality and public health studies. You must maintain and strengthen tribal and community protections and require formal consultation with the tribes here. You must ensure construction does not disrupt indigenous heritage. And you must make data centers enter agreements that provide tangible benefits, job training, environmental restoration, funding for local infrastructure. And you must establish third-party audits of electricity, water use, and environmental compliance with penalties. And you've done none of these things in preparation for this. Without clear commitments on these issues, especially having enforceable mechanisms, this project does not represent a responsible or fair investment for Western New York residents. Thank you.
Annie Hope?
That's what we're gonna hear 24/7.
Annie Hope?
I'm a resident of Ithaca, New York. I'm reading a statement on behalf of Kate Kramer, K-A-T-E-K-R-E-M-E-R, who is a resident of Lyndonville, New York. Dear G C E D C CEO Mark Massey, pursuant to general municipal law 859A, I am writing to oppose the proposed financial incentives for project rampart, and I'm assuming all of the projects. There are few publicly available details about this project. The financial incentives at issue are not listed on the G C E D C website, neither was any cost-benefit analysis. A primary focus of economic development in rural communities is the creation of good-paying permanent jobs. Data centers do not employ many full-time employees, given the size of their operations. To assess fiscal incentives, it is important to know the number of permanent jobs and the salary range for the various planned positions. Despite scarce specific economic data on this project, enough is known about data centers in general and the specific location to deny incentives for this data center project. Stamp is described as a green manufacturing megasite. The only green thing about data centers is their enormous use of green energy, or whatever cheap energy is available. The large footprint of this project, its high energy use, its heavy environmental impact, and 24/7 infrasound noise, along with its scarcity of well-paying permanent positions in proportion to its size, are reasons the project is not a good fit for the Stamp project, and why no incentives should be granted. If the G C E D C plans to move forward with incentives for this project, I request that additional data be posted and another public hearing be held. Additionally, I want to address the incompatibility of the Stamp project overall to the rural nature of this community. This is true of the proposed data centers and of the existing manufacturing at the Stamp site. Scheduling the hearing on the date of an important religious holiday for the neighboring Tonawanda Seneca Nation lets me know that the G C E D C is not in communication with this important stakeholder. This is a mistake. This is a mistake that should be rectified. Had it been in early conversations with T S N, the G C E D C could have reconsidered the location and/or boundaries of the site. Instead, Genesee County has created incompatible use right next to the T S N land. Noise, air pollution, wastewater, use of toxic materials, all within close proximity to T S N sacred lands, is intolerable for their community and way of life. Noise travels widely across undeveloped land. Air pollution does not know boundaries. Extremely high water usage and subsequent wastewater disposal poses threats to waterways that flow widely to impact the entire area. The danger of toxic spills is increased by the Stamp site. Secondarily, the site does not border, but is near the Iroquois National Wildlife Refuge. The same issues as listed for the T S N are applicable to the I N W R. There is a reason that we do not build skyscrapers in the middle of rural farmland. It does not fit the character of the area. The same can be said for the Stamp site. Although large amounts of money have been put into the site, it is past time to take a second look and accommodate the needs and concerns of our Tonawanda Seneca Nation neighbors. Thank you.
Vicki Lawson?
I did not put a check next to mine either.
Oh, well, there's one on here, but okay.
I didn't. Maybe next time.
Okay. Jason Maholsky?
Hello. Jason Maholsky. I'm a resident, business owner of Orleans County. I frequently attend Genesee County, spend my money. I also attend the wildlife refuge frequently for hunting and just enjoying the wildlife. I would like my comments applied to all projects and all incentives. I firmly oppose this. This project has been ramrodded through the citizens with little to no input, as evidenced by many comments thus far. All incentives, you shouldn't be picking winners and losers. The corporate greed has gotten out of control in this country, and people are waking up to it. You saw little input from us as citizens, yet you continue to destroy our environment. It'd be one thing if you were living right next door, but I highly doubt you are. So once again, I oppose all these incentives. I ask that you be children of light rather than children of darkness. Please encourage the community to come together, see how we're gonna make an impact in a positive way rather than this negativity.
Alora Bersino?
Hi, my name's Alora Bersino. I live in Ranssonville, New York. I'm a senior certified surgical technologist at Roswell Park Comprehensive Cancer Center. I'm speaking in opposition to all three data centers at the Stamp site, as well as all other development at the Stamp site. I love my career in the operating room, but taking care of cancer patients is a job I wish did not exist. Unfortunately, in Western New York, we have a huge amount of environmental pollutants, which is directly responsible for our high cancer rates. This project is a clear example of how capitalism has lost its goddamn mind. Growth for the sake of growth is the ideology of a cancer cell. The fact that this proposed project is even a possibility is absolutely insane. There is absolutely no reason why this location should even be considered for development. The Stamp site is located in the middle of the John White Wildlife Management Area, the Iroquois National Wildlife Refuge, the Tonawanda Wildlife Management Area, and of course, the Tonawanda Seneca Nation. If the only value you find in the world is money, you have completely lost and forgotten the meaning for life and the reason for existence. It is clear that every single person who made the decisions to get us all to this point has lost their connection to the earth, and they do not care about anyone else's connection to the earth or any other living beings. Because they have lost their own connections to the natural world, they do not understand or respect anyone else's connection to the earth, in particular, the indigenous peoples who are the original people of this land. They have already endured so much harm, and colonization is clearly still ongoing. Not to mention, building on or in a wetland is not wise. It will be extremely difficult to build anything on that land, and the risk of contamination of the fresh water encompassing all of the surrounding wildlife refuges and the Tonawanda Seneca Nation, which relies on wild water. And by the way, that already happened, just so you know, in case you didn't know. The Tonawanda Seneca Nation, oh wait, sorry, I already said that. A project like this should never be built anywhere near wetlands of this magnitude, pristine old-growth forest, wildlife preserves, or next to a native nation. There are no good reasons for this to exist at the expense of all life around it. I call upon the G C E D C to reject all applications and permits on the Stamp project, and for the D E C and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to conduct a full environmental review and revoke all permits. To quote a lyric from Bob Dylan, "All the money you made will never buy back your soul."
Jacob Clark?
I won't be able to hear you if you move right over there. Fair enough. Fair enough. Okay, I'll move him over here. Sure, this thing is, yeah, what do you gotta do? Let's get this good IT in here, okay. All right, setup timer. Hello again, everybody. My name is Jacob Clark. I am a Tonawanda Seneca Nation member. I am a resident of East Aurora. And again, I'm reading on behalf of somebody who cannot make it here for reasons previously disclosed. I write to you. I'm reading on behalf of the interfaith climate justice community, and it reads as such. Dear Mark Massey and G C E D C board, we write to you as people of faith. We are parents, grandparents, grateful inhabitants of the Great Lakes, and people sustained by our communities and the ecological diversity of the western part of New York. We work to protect the gift of creation and pass it on to our children and future generations. We therefore write to you to be clear that we are opposed to any financial or other incentives to project potentia, project rampart, and project double read at Stamp in Genesee County. We are opposed to your support of the development of data centers at Stamp. Data centers in general are highly problematic because of high energy and water use, the negative impacts of noise, and nearby communities of wildlife, air pollution, and water discharge, just to name a few. We assume, as stewards of this project, that you are well aware of the dangers of putting this type of use in the middle of one of the largest complexes of wetlands east of the Mississippi, directly adjacent to the Tonawanda Seneca Nation's big woods, and close by rural and small-town communities. This type of use will bring serious harm to adjacent lands, wildlife, farm animals, and people. Part of your work is to surely, is to protect citizens from negative health impacts. Further, we see no indication that these projects have been reviewed in light of the C L C P A for climate impacts, nor have consideration, nor have considered, pardon me, the New York State 30-by-30 goal of protecting and preserving the 30% of ecological functioning natural systems by 2030. We look forward to such reviews. We repeat, we oppose any incentives for these data centers, projects to include project potentia, project rampart, and project double read. Sincerely, Sister Lene O'Connor and Roger Cook. Thank you.
Betty Pitcher?
Hello. My name is Betty Pitcher. I live in Lancaster, New York, but till recently, I lived in East Aurora, where I saw an article from Jacob Clark about this issue and read some other materials. So I wrote a little paper about it. The Iroquois National Wildlife, let's see, okay. The Iroquois National Wildlife Refuge and the Tonawanda Seneca Nation must be protected. The Stamp project would do great harm to this area. It would be disastrous to the Tonawanda Seneca Nation and the Iroquois National Wildlife Refuge. Stamp is surrounded by four state and federally protected areas and would border the Tonawanda Seneca Nation's big woods. In this area, there are wetlands, grasslands, and forests with its wildlife of birds and other animals. There is cultural and natural history and natural beauty. Nature does not have a voice. It is up to us to be that voice to protect this very special place by saying no to Stamp and its irreparable damage. We must be that voice to protect this natural beauty. This is what makes New York such a beautiful state. Thank you.
Chris Morowski?
Hi, my name is Chris Morowski from Buffalo, New York. I'm gonna be reading comments from Michael Slosman. Michael's name is M.I.C.H.A.E.L. S.L.O.S.M.A.N., and Michael lives in Akron, New York. Writing to express comments about the proposed financial incentives being offered by G C E D C to project potentia. And I oppose the proposed incentives for project potentia and the development of project potentia by G C E D C. While I can't be here today due to my work schedule, I'm confident that many local residents are speaking today about how this project is both illegal and harmful to the environment. I believe the ethics of this project and the wider world are also worth calling into question. In order to power AI, data centers like the one being proposed are necessary. AI contributes to de-skilling jobs, and he has a reference here for that, to referencing an article by Jacobin. The problem with AI is about power, not technology. Wage deflation, and then has a reference to an article in Forbes. Artificial intelligence has caused a 50% to 70% decrease in wages, creating income inequality and threatening millions of jobs. And intellectual property theft from writers and artists, and then has a reference to a Reuters article, OpenAI, Microsoft hit new author copyright lawsuit over AI training. Choosing to proceed with the construction of this data center will make the world a worse place, both locally and globally. If this project proceeds, individuals who orchestrated it are willingly complicit in all of this. For everyone's sake, this project needs to be abandoned. Thank you.
Jean Dixon?
Hi again. My name is Jean Dixon. I'm reading a message from the Grandmothers Council of Niagara that is signed by Linda Schneekloth, S.C.H.N.E.E.K.L.O.T.H. She's the convener of this organization. The Grandmothers Council of Niagara is concerned with the protection of life on earth. It asks, of all actions and practices today, will this action ensure that future generations will have a thriving and beautiful planet as home, a planet that has been bequeathed to us from our ancestors? We are concerned with the entire planet, but our home is Western New York, a rich and fertile place with bountiful waters, rich land, productive ecologies, and diverse communities of people. We respond to Stamp project and this particular use of incentives from that perspective. We are opposed to any financial and other incentives for data centers, projects, potentia, rampart, or double read by G C E D C at the Stamp site. Further, we are opposed to the entire Stamp project, as it is injurious to the lands, ecologies, waters, and peoples of this region, especially the adjacent community, the Tonawanda Seneca Nation. Within the terms outlined for the public hearing, comments on incentives. It is premature. We have not been informed of what the incentives are, who the owners, operators, and investors of the proposed... .................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
who the owners, operators, and investors of the proposed facilities are. Cost-benefit analyses have not been done. Comprehensive and independent studies of the impacts of a data center in the area regarding noise, water impacts, electricity use on the areas ecology and residents have not been done, on which to make evaluations of impact. G C E D C has not done the work to bring forward any request. So we respectfully request this work be done and shared and another legal public hearing scheduled. Further, the issues of incentives must be framed within the context of $410 million in taxpayer subsidies and the fact that crypto corporations were responsible for nearly half of all total spending in the past three election cycles." That's from Public Citizen News, January, February 2025. "This dwarfs direct corporate spending by big oil and other corporate sectors, and they are asking for more taxpayer money? Within the terms of place, its ecologies, the climate and species crises facing us at this moment, this project makes no sense at all. From the grandmother's perspective, and I too am a grandmother, no public investment should be made into something like crypto, an unregulated financial game that offers no public benefits." One could argue A I might be important, although we survived only 15 years ago without it, and most of its uses are not a public benefit, but rather a public scam. Further, there appears to be new, much less energy-intensive procedures now available. Stamp was initiated to support the development of, quote, "green manufacturing," unquote, in New York State over 12 years ago. It has not done this. One could argue it was a good goal, but the project was poorly cited in a rural landscape next to the largest wetland complex east of the Mississippi and adjacent to an environmental justice community, the Tonawanda Seneca Nation. This is a critical moment we share on this planet with the increasing weather-related events and global system's impact of human-caused climate change and ongoing rapid extinction of all species. It is time to abandon the Stamp project. It has been and continues to do harm. Other uses for this land might be a research-development project related to the restoration of wetlands in the state. That would be a public good." Signed. Signed by the Grandmothers Council of Niagara.
Amy Khan? Amy Khan? Christine Abrams?
Now, Wes Scannell. On behalf of the Tonawanda Seneca Nation Council Chiefs, I extend greetings to you and your associates and give thanks that are all enduring good health. The nation learned on Friday, January 24th, that G C E D C is scheduled for today, February 3rd, public hearings on incentives to be offered to the three data-centered projects, known as Hydrascale, Potentia, Rampart, and Double Read, being concerned to locate at Stamp. Also on January 24th, the nation requested more information from G C D C about the hearing, including information on what incentives were being offered and what companies would operate the data centers. G C D C did not provide the requested information on incentives until a full week later on the afternoon of January 31st. Just one business day prior to the hearings, and to this day has not identified, identified the operators of the data centers. Under these circumstances, a separate public meeting should be scheduled. Neither the nation nor the general public can be expected to weigh in on incentives when basic information about them is not available or not available well in advance of the hearing. G C E D C must publicize the requested information and schedule a second hearing after the nation and the public has time to review it. Moreover, February 3rd falls during the nation midwinter ceremonies, meaning nation leaders are not able to attend this hearing. G C E D C did not consult with the nation about timing of this meeting. At this time, the nation provides the following preliminary comments and reserves the right to provide additional comments once it has reviewed, received, and reviewed the information necessary to assess the true costs and benefits of the proposed incentives. Public money should not go to projects that threaten serious harm to the nation, our, our environment, and our way of life. The state of New York took our land, including the land where the data centers would sit, and our ancestors put lives, put their lives on the line to retain the small piece of our territory that remains ours. Now, G C D C is using state money and county money to try to finish what the state started centuries ago, destroying our land for profit and threatening our way of life. The nation has raised preliminary concerns about the impacts of the data centers by letter to G C D C dated January 30th, 2025, and hereby incorporates that letter by reference. The nation is particularly concerned that while General Municipal Law 585-A, 5B requires G C E D C to publish a written cost-benefit analysis of the data center projects that includes consideration of renewable energy goals, no such analysis has been provided, and the costs of the projects and their impact on the state's renewable energy goals have not been yet assessed. Only after assessing, assessing the environmental impacts of the projects in consultation with the nation through the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEAKER, can G C D C compile a valid cost-benefit analysis. As the nation's January 30th letter, 2025 letter attests, these projects would take a terrible toll on the environment and the nation, and those costs must be considered. For these reasons, the nation opposes providing incentives to Project Hydrascale, Potentia, Project Rampart, and/or Project Double Read. Done.
Evelyn Whackett? I waited until you got comfortable before I called you.
What?
I waited for you to get comfortable.
Yeah, I called that. All right. You can be uncomfortable. Uncomfortable talking in front of people, but this thing's got me talking in front of people. Okay, so first of all, I'm gonna say I'm opposed to any development at Stamp, mainly because of the wetlands and the effects on wildlife. So everything that I said before on the Project Rampart, you can ditto into this, and then I'm going to add, some of the comments that were put on the petition. One came from Caitlin. "These wetlands are such a vital part of our local ecosystem. They provide natural hunting grounds, hiking trails, wildlife refuges, and more. This area deserves to thrive, to preserve what we have left of a resource that is shrinking. The destruction of these lands would have a deep, lasting negative impact on our environment." I have written down some notes about World Wetlands Day, and I'm just gonna read off these notes that I wrote down. "The wetlands are home to 40% of the world's plant and animal species. Wetlands absorb carbon dioxide, aiding in cleaning water and air. The wetlands are disappearing three times faster than forests due to pollution, development, and climate change. Our wetlands are essential to the Earth's balance. And what I said earlier today is that it creates habitat for countless species, seen and unseen. And, you know, you're not seeing the effects that you're having on the environment, like the little vernal pools and the things that exist in the wetlands that we don't see every day. And wetlands are very important to all of us, and as I said earlier, we're all connected. Water is life. We hurt our water, we hurt ourselves." That's it.
Madeline Nigley? Uh, Adrienne Yocina?
I'm nervous. My name's Adrienne Yocina, A D R I E N N E Y O C I N A. And I'm from Indian Falls. And I, I oppose all three sites for crypto mining, as well as Stamp. I'm not a landowner, I'm a renter, but we live here too. And when landowners' costs go up, it trickles right on down to us. That's one thing that does trickle down. Fifteen years ago, I moved here from Pennsylvania. I've raised three boys here, the youngest of which just swore into the military yesterday. They had a chance to play, fish, and get covered in mud. And they had a great childhood here. And I'd like everybody who lives in this area, their kids and their grandkids, to have the same opportunity mine did, which I'm very grateful for. When I first moved here from Pennsylvania, my first time driving onto the Tonawanda Seneca Nation was jaw-dropping. I had never seen, uh, my boys called them prehistoric trees. You might be used to seeing them here, but these woods don't exist everywhere. And they're gonna be harder and harder to find. If you want an indication of how these data centers will play out, you can look at North Tonawanda, New York. The residents there have described the noise as 100 times that of a jet engine. And with the topography, topography of Indian Falls, that will echo further than you think. This is one of the many reasons I support the land-back movement. I want the health and safety of our indigenous neighbors, as well as others, to be put first, before profit. They say past behavior is an indication of future behavior. The G C E D C, you, if you wanna know how they'll keep someone in check, look at the apartment building on the corner of Jackson and Ellet and Batavia. Thank you, that's all.
Oh sure, it's S C I R T O. I'm Kirk Skirdel. You've already heard from me, but I'm gonna read the comments from Shelby Green. She's a resident of Shelby. She says, "I'm a resident of the town of Shelby. I'm writing pursuant of General Municipal Law 859 to oppose the proposed financial incentives being offered by G C D C to Project Rampart. I'm glad that Article 18-1 of General Municipal Law requires G C E D C host this hearing. As G C D C's communication with the community regarding Stamp, despite G C E D C's aforementioned deception, data centers have hugely significant negative environmental impacts on their surroundings that destroy and disrupt wildlife and hugely decrease the quality of life for those who live nearby. G C E D C has exhibited a gross disregard for meaningful engagement with the Tonawanda Seneca Nation, whose sovereign land will be directly and negatively impacted by the presence of a data center just feet away. Not only is G C E D C's failure to communicate illegal, it's incredibly disrespectful. The timing of this hearing makes it clear that G C E D C has no interest in holding an honest and accessible conversation with the communities that will be harmed by the presence of a data center. G C E D C has not disclosed the identities of the companies represented by data center investor groups, has failed to provide the public with information regarding the financial incentives being offered to the three data centers, and has not provided a written cost-benefit analysis regarding jobs and environmental impacts as required by General Municipal Law. Why should our community trust a company that has entirely failed in its original mission and will not share honest information about the tenants it is now desperately trying to move in when they say that a data center will benefit us? G C E D C's sneakiness and deception regarding Stamp site makes clear that the introduction of a data center simply responds to G C E D C's own failure and is not something that will serve our community. I demand G C E D C produce the written cost-benefit analysis for Project Rampart, disclose the identity of the owners and operators of the projects, provide the completed application required, complete a noise study, follow the Environmental Justice Sitting Law, and schedule another round of accessible public hearings." Uh, these are the words of Shelby Green. And I, and I also did want to add, there was a previous speaker who mentioned how horrendous the timing of this was for working folks. But also, it mentioned the Tonawanda Seneca Nation. They're in the middle of their midwinter ceremony. So this is a very sacred time for them, and they're not able to be here. Uh, we do have some of their, their members with us. We should acknowledge that they have led, you know, the activism against Stamp from the very beginning. And, you know, we should all be very thankful that they, you know, for thousands of years have been working to protect Mother Earth, and they continue doing it to this day. We all should be following their lead. Uh, you know, not coming in as sort of outside parasites, as I mentioned, to try to, you know, take the resources and extract wealth. So, you know, if, if there was any, I mean, I almost wonder if G C E D C intentionally knew that the midwinter ceremonies were currently present. And this was a way to, uh, you know, have our meeting, you know, essentially without them. After all, they really have never consulted the Tonawanda Seneca Nation, nor have the other companies involved. And even our government agencies have neglected to consult with the Tonawanda Seneca Nation. So this is a devastating legacy, and it cannot happen.
Sarah Howard?
Hi, my name is Sarah Howard, H O W A R D. I still live in Syracuse, New York. And I'm here to tell you why I completely and totally oppose the direction of $124,864,000 in sales tax exemptions and $42,784,801 in property tax exemptions. That is a total of $167,464,801 in taxpayer dollars, which equals out to $837,000 and, these are such big numbers, $837,324 per job. Any of that money going to the crooks at Jones, Lang, and LaSalle LLC, who are the developers of Project Potentia. And yes, they are crooks. If you Google the name of that company, you will find out that they were fined in the fall of 2024 by the Canadian government for money laundering. And also, in the same time, they were, uh, they paid $8 million to settle a separate securities fraud case in an American court. And we all know how difficult it is as a white-collar criminal in this country to be convicted, so that really says something. So I'm gonna tell you a little bit about the slapdash and amateurish environmental assessment form that they submitted for Project Potentia, which used to be called Project Hydrascale, but then mysteriously they changed the name. And I'm guessing it's because Hydrascale sounds like something that you don't want growing inside your bathtub drain, but who knows? And so if you, if you listened to Mark earlier, Project Potentia is described as an 892,000-square-foot data center. But if you click on the E A F on G C E D C's website and scroll to page three, you'll see that the total square footage is- you'll see that the total square footage is listed at 1.8 million, which is a really different number. And the difference in those two numbers might produce the feeling of being gaslit, which is actually a relevant sensation for Project Potentia, because the EAF also claims that this data center would use approximately 1,284,085,050 gallons of diesel fuel per year and would store up to 700,000 gallons of diesel onsite at any given time. That is a lot of diesel fuel. Do any of you want to live just downstream of 700,000 gallons of stored diesel fuel, as would be the case for the citizens of the Tonawawana Seneca Nation where Potentia to be built? I don't think so. So, there are a lot of discrepancies in the EAF. I've already named some of them. Another really important one is that the original, sorry, the original EAF for Project Potentia states that air permits would be required. The revised one does not. Which is it? Do they need air permits for 14,000 tons of carbon dioxide per year or not? It doesn't really matter what they think. We all know that CO2 is a noxious air pollutant and would have significant and disproportionate impacts on the citizens of the Tonawawana Seneca Nation and other neighbors. It's also a greenhouse gas. Somewhere in the original application, Potentia's backers claim that there would be no impacts to wetlands and that 100% of the soils onsite are well-drained. We've heard that this is absolutely not the case. The application also contains concerning information with no explanation. For example, the site plans show water tanks holding nearly 2 million gallons of water that would be required to serve the facility. What are those for? My guess is that they aren't for stormwater retention, but they're for cooling the 28,000 gallons of water per day that Potentia would pump through their square footage of buildings. Potentia states that the project will include no impoundments, but it names onsite stormwater retention via ponds. Which is it? Are there ponds or no ponds? What are they for? And I want to make sure that other people have time to speak. We've already been here for a really long time. And it's very clear that no one in this room wants any public money to go to Project Potentia and that there's absolutely no public benefit to be found in their project. Thank you so much.
Kelka Salisbury?
Thank you, Kelka Salisbury, Town of Alabama. Grateful and humble resident of the Tonawawana Seneca's traditional lands. For the record, I don't think I said this in the last time I spoke, but I wanted to be made clear that I oppose any proposed financial incentives for all three projects, Potentia, Rampart, and Double Read. And I agree with all those that have spoken so far. Thank you.
James Burnett?
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I wish to yield my three minutes to whoever wants to go overtime.
Okay.
Thank you.
Margaret Booster?
Well, I do have a letter from the same 57 organizations that signed on to this letter and coordinated by and helped write this letter by the allies of Tonawawana Seneca Nation and the Western New York Environmental Alliance. I'm going to give you that letter. But I also want to add, I've sort of done a compilation from this and all of our letters, because I can't stay for the next, that speaks to things that have been said in this room today. So, where are we today with stamp? Well, Schumer and Hochul, we had their vision of a microchip corridor across New York State centered by stamp. And that's not happening. We're not going to have that. The microchip thing isn't going to happen here at stamp. And so, you know, Mr. Massey and company have the task of finding out, okay, who can they get? So Plug Power, Plug Power was one of the first to develop there. They have their two concrete mushrooms out there. But, you know, they've been paused for, I don't know, five years or something, a while. And apparently, Plug Power has gotten an incentive from the federal government, but not necessarily this Plug Power. So it's pretty iffy whether Plug Power is going to continue. And part of the reason for that is because a state smart growth study done in 2013 found stamp site for this type of, you know, to be a mega industrial manufacturing center, it ranked it as absolute worst in the state because of location inefficiency. Location inefficiency. You know, it's distance from markets, it's distance from labor, it's distance from infrastructure, location inefficiency. So it's not a good site, even financially, if you believed that these financial things that we're dealing with were good. Meanwhile, people have mentioned today this 30-by-30 goal that we have. And the 30-by-30 goal, just want to elaborate on that. What is it? It's a goal that our governor Hochul has signed on to, Biden signed on to, the Canadian premier has signed on to. It's 30% natural lands and waters by 2030. It's a policy, a goal. And it's based on scientific research that says in the lower 48 states, we're at 5% of natural land and water left. 5%, which is...
Thirty seconds, but you got the three minutes if you want.
Okay, astonishing to me. And this is according to scientists like E.O. Wilson, who wrote these incredible books on insects, and Doug Tallamy, who's written about plants and vegetation. 5% left of the natural world in the lower 48 states. So, how can we afford to look at the land where stamp is going to be built as vacant land? I mean, that is how the approach of our, you know, of the Genesee County Government, the Genesee County Economic Development Center, is, hey, this is vacant land. We can do anything we want with it. Whereas, everybody in this room has spoken eloquently to what is there. The Tonawawana Seneca Nation, the wildlife refuges. And there's also at least two plants or a wildlife corridor across the United States as a sort of climate change, you know, help to migrating wildlife that includes the stamp campus and all of this because of the refugees and so forth. So this is on the maps as part of a Mexico-to-Maine wildlife corridor. So people are thinking about this. So, we've long said through Western New York Environmental Alliance, rethink stamp. It's time to rethink stamp. You have to move away from this vacant land model, which is what got us into trouble in the first place. It's the settler mentality. And yeah, we got to give that up. And build on, or at least first recognize, the beauty and health and importance of what's already here. And also of the Tonawawana Seneca, because the beauty and health and resilience of what's already here is not necessarily just because these things happen to be here, but it's also because of the stewardship of this community of people that has lasted for centuries in this spot and respects the fact that there is this kind of life here. And so, we're fortunate to have the Tonawawana Seneca and all of the results of this kind of caretaking. And why would we mess that up? So, I just want to say that I'm hearing more stop the stamp, yes, but I'm also hearing more rethink stamp. And I think there's a whole lot of opportunities for you to rethink what could happen there that would be much more agreeable to everyone in the room and probably much better for the planet and Genesee County. Thank you.
Is that the same, did you want to give me the letter?
Oh, yeah.
Or is that the same one?
Okay.
Gary Surzak?
Hello, my name is Gary Surzak. And today I'm reading on behalf of Dave Giaccherio of Kent, New York, to the members of the GCEDC. The comments below refer to the three proposals, Potentia, Rampart, and Double Read to construct data centers on the stamp site. I'm writing to express, to give my comments about the proposed financial incentives being offered by GCEDC to the three projects. I am commenting as an individual and not as a representative of any group or association. I have no conflict of interest in this issue, and I believe my comments are acceptable under Article 18-1 of the General Municipal Law. My understanding is that there are three firms competing to build a gigantic data processing center at the stamp site. As you know, AI and cloud computing technology is surging ahead, hence the need for huge new data centers. AI, though incredibly powerful, requires tremendous amounts of computing power, which in turn requires tremendous amounts of electricity and cooling water for the data center. What a data center does not require is a large number of workers. To be sure, building a data center on the stamp site makes eminent sense to the corporations proposing to build it. It's in a rural area with few neighbors to complain about the noise. It comes with a promise of cheap electricity and cheap plentiful water. It likely comes with huge tax abatements. And there is no need to worry about a lack of housing for the labor force, because the labor force will be so small. It's an ideal situation for the corporation, a clear win. The problem is that it's not a win-win situation. From the viewpoint of other stakeholders, like the people of New York, especially those living near the site, it's far from ideal. Years ago, at its inception, stamp was pitched to the public by the GCEDC and the governor and Senator Schumer as a job-creating entity. It has not lived up to that promise. In my opinion, the mere fact that people are considering their current proposals for the data center with its high demand for infrastructure and minimal labor force is tantamount to an admission of failure for the GCEDC and its job-creating message. In summary, for reasons outlined above, which I believe to be compelling, the construction of a data center at the stamp site is not in the best interests of the people of New York and should not be approved. Therefore, I oppose the proposed incentives for any of these projects, and I oppose the development of any of the three projects by the GCEDC. Furthermore, I recommend that the GCEDC take a long, hard look at stamp itself and consider this possibility. After years of offering huge incentives and getting so few takers, maybe there's something fundamentally wrong with stamp.
Diane Surzak?
My name is Diane Surzak. I spoke before. I live in Buffalo, New York. I just wanted to add a couple more comments since I rushed through my earlier statements. I am speaking on behalf of the Sierra Club, the Atlantic chapter that represents, that has membership of 37,000 people across the state. I want to reiterate a couple things. Many people here have spoken about the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, the Environmental Justice Siting Law, the General Municipal Law. I just want to stress, these are not discretionary. You don't get to comply with them if you feel like it, but not if you... This project, if you look at it, any way you look at it, is in violation of all of those laws, as well as an insult to the community and to the state. I'd also like to say that we're, just for the record, we are opposing Project Potentia, Project Rampart, Project Double Read, and any development, industrial development at stamp. The idea that suggested, that is being suggested that this is not money that's actually being spent out of state money, but it's actually sales tax abatements that will be off into the future, is the wrong way to look at it. Number one, we are investing money. We can see the money pouring in from the state to build the infrastructure, to keep the GCEDC going, to keep the stamp project going, which I believe is up to $400 billion at this point. But we're still, you're still proposing to build sewer lines and water lines and all this other stuff. Secondly, these companies didn't actually put into their application how much money they're seeking. They were actually desperate to find people or communities that will host them. And there's no need to offer them anything. It's crazy that we are, that GCEDC, or we, the state of New York, are trying to induce them to come in here when they are regarded around the world and they're so, as a nuisance. And in fact, they have been thrown out of at least one country, and they have to hide behind non-disclosure agreements, which you and I have actually signed, and other ways, third parties and real estate development companies. So nobody knows what is really going to happen to their community. But communities are finding out, and they're talking about it. And anybody, it's already been said, anybody who wants to research these can find out how bad they are. So I just wanted to just make that point. I urge you to think differently about what is happening here. Basically, you're being taken for suckers to basically bribe them to come here when nobody wants them. It makes no sense. Thank you.
Joseph O'Malley?
My name is Joseph O'Malley. I live on unceded Seneca land on the banks of the Nyackra River. I'm an ecologist and evolutionary biologist with training in both ornithology and wetland biology. And I've come here today to oppose the financial incentives proposed to be offered to any data center by the GCEDC, including those offered to Project Potentia, Rampart, or Double Read. These subsidies and tax incentives are slap-in-face to my generation, who will inevitably be left to clean up the mess created by any one of these projects. The GCEDC's misuse of lands meant to advance green regional economic development is a shame. We here in the West Belt are surrounded by the corpses of industries gone by and likewise, by the legacy of ecological destruction of our land, air, and water. We have not heard a single public comment in favor of these incentives. Not one. I venture to guess that this is because those people who stand to benefit from these data centers financially are not part of our community. They do not care about us. We are already living in climate catastrophe. During heat waves, we already lose power, leading to dangerous heat exposure and illness. These data centers, in the event of such power outage, switch to diesel-powered generators. In heat waves, ground-level ozone, which causes respiratory distress in humans and animals, especially those of us unlucky enough to be affected by things like asthma and long COVID, is already high. Burning fossil fuels, such as those generated by the data center generators, is known to increase air pollution that damages our ability to breathe. No number of jobs is worth my life. No number of jobs is worth my life. These data centers would also use massive amounts of water, taken from the Niagara River as well as other sources. And many of these waters are already unfishable, unswimable, undrinkable, and unlivable for us and our more-than-human relatives. The industrial runoff, hydrological disruptions, and heated water discharge from a data center would create decades more work for those of us already working to remediate those impacts from prior industries. More work, I imagine, than the 150 jobs that these data centers purport to create. We can create more than 150 jobs by remediating the Stamp site now, clean up the messes that already exist, and make the choice to listen to the Tonawanda Seneca Nation and their allies. If goodwill and self-preservation are not motivation enough for this body, including you, Mr. Massey, to oppose financial incentivizing the eco side of our region, then consider the legality of this project. Do you truly want to spend time and money defending proposals that violate the Environmental Justice Sitting Law, the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, and most importantly, the sovereignty of the Tonawanda Seneca Nation and their land stewardship since time immemorial? I should hope not. As you can see, if the GCEDC chooses to continue entertaining these proposals, you will be met with opposition from every one of us. And I swear on all that is holy, if you consider adding data centers or any other industrial development on this land to an agenda in the future as a viable economic development option, I'm bringing all my friends, and we will be here for hours having a laugh at your expense. Have a good one.
I think that'll end the Potentia Holdings public hearing, and we'll move into stream U.S. data centers to the Seneca Chiefs.